Welcome everyone to the October 21st work session. Welcome everyone here at home. Welcome, Councilor Clark.
(laughing). Now we have a majority.
Okay, first item up for our work session this evening is Bethel Community Park YMCA project update. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn this over to Neil to get us started with a presentation and then question and answers.
Great. So Emily Proudfoot is here with me. Probably most of you know Emily. She's a landscape architect with us. And I'm the planning manager for Parks and Open Space and we're going to tag team this. We just have a few slides. We're going to leave you plenty of time to ask questions and have discussion. So this project actually in the discussion stages goes back a number of years, but most of what we're going to talk to you about happened in 2011 and 2012.
Yes.
And started out with some conversations between Parks and Open Space and Recreation Division. And Craig Smith is here, so if any recreation type questions come up that we can answer, Craig can handle those. And the idea came up of having a community center next to a school in the North Eugene area. And so the first thing that we did is we kind of chewed through the question of is there merit to us exploring this idea? That's the first thing we did at POS. And so we worked with Recreation Division and looked at service provision patterns and where the needs were. And we looked at what the why was coming to the city in offering. And we looked at our capacity and we looked at some sites and Bethel came up as the top site. And so we initially concluded, yep, this may be a partnership that could be mutually beneficial in terms of providing services to the north part of town. And so we said, yes, we're going to invest in exploring this idea. And so we agreed to conduct a park planning exercise to look at really kind of a couple of questions. And Emily's really going to walk you through what we did. But the key question was, should we have a differently configured and larger community center in the master plan for Bethel Community Park? So Bethel Community Park is south of Barger. If you turn on Legacy off of Barger, you'll go right past the park. There's four baseball fields right in the middle. So we were looking at that question. Can the park accommodate a larger community center? Does it make sense to have a larger one? And if so, where should it be? And then that evolved into the whole discussion we had with the community. So direct your attention up to the slides up there on the wall there. And this is perhaps a little hard to read, but this is actually a page out of our project and priority plan for the park system. And you can see this right here is Bethel Community Park. And you can see at the bottom where it says Bethel Community Center was a priority five project. So just as a refresher, some of you were involved and some of you are newer to the council, but the project and priority plan is the one council adopted policy document we have that guides future park facilities. So the community center is in there. It was intended to be built ways out in the future. Priority five means we don't really know when it's going to happen, but we think it's going to happen someday. So it was in the project and priority plan and it's on the old master plan as a rather small facility. So one of the things that we looked at initially with partners in Recreation Division is provision of services around the city. And those different colored blobs are the park systems' planning sub-areas. And we look at services and parks within each of those areas. And you can see these are the kind of community center facilities that are out there. They're largely on the east side of town and oriented more towards the south. And there's really not much on the north side. And you can see this little dot here is Peterson Barn, which is a small community center, which is all we have serving that whole Bethel, Danube area. And so in part, looking at the service provision that we had here and talking with Recreation Division, we recognized that while we do currently have Echo Hollow Pool out in that area and we want to continue to operate that during its useful life, we don't have enough facilities and staff and resources out in that area. And the near-term picture, looking out five to 10 years, we don't see us having the resources to provide the services ourselves, meaning the city provide adequate community services out there. So seeing that and having the why come and say, we think we can help you with that. We could build a center out there and staff it and maintain it if we could work with the city to have a site. So the first next step was to go through the planning process to see how that worked with community input, where the community came in on that project, what kind of concerns they raised, and how we could address those. So that's the big picture overview. Emily's going to describe to you the process that we went through, what came up.
Back to the last one and tell me where the Bethel Community Park is.
Yes, here I can show you. Let's see, is it the red one? Okay, let's see. So it's right about here. It's very close to the UGB. It's right there.
Thank you.
It's a little bit hard to see, but it would be way on the west side.
(inaudible) dotted line in the ground.
Can everybody see that? I can do it again. Yeah, okay.
Russia from there too?
Yes, maybe some other states.
Korea.
Okay. Our former master plan included a whole bunch of amenities. This was our former master plan. It's basically a 33-acre site. Meadowview Elementary is just to the north of the site. So our existing amenities are obviously the Babe Ruth Fields, the synthetic fields that were constructed, you know, big sort of active developed play amenities, some parking. Our wastewater pump station is there too, some natural areas. And then our future was going to be a 10,000-square-foot community center, some spray play, dog park, you know, just these sort of things that you frequently plan into a community park. These were all in our original master plan. And so the community center proposal was of a scale.
So Bethel Community, Bethel School District property?
Yep, that is up to date. They still own that property.
Future potential school.
Potentially. And they've gone round and round about what to do there. I don't know what their plan is today, but they've had, over time, they've had multiple plans for that site and haven't been interested in selling, basically.
And during this process, they were very involved with the process. And we asked them whether or not this was a potential site for a community center. And at that point, they said, well, we're thinking it might not be a school, but we're going to reserve it for a possible maintenance facility. And so that question got asked, could this be the site of a community center? And they said, no.
And I think it was helpful to be clear about this in the planning process because lots of people use that area as part of the community park. They run their dogs there. You know, there's no fencing or anything that really delineates that as a separate component, but it is not property that the city owns. So what really triggers, you know, the need to take another look at the master plan is because our original master plan called for a 10,000-square-foot facility. And what the why was proposing for a larger community center would be up to a 65,000-square-foot community center. One of the interesting things about how we have had community centers in our city up to this point has been that they tend to be fairly small, and this is how we planned for it, you know, originally. And they tend to serve a specific sector of our community. So the Peterson Barn right now serves a lot of teens, teen court. If you think of Campbell Center, they serve older adults. So we have some fairly specific uses that happen in each of these sort of smaller community centers. So what we're talking about here actually is a full-service community center and therefore we're looking at a much larger footprint. So potential inclusion of a branch library. So the library's been running out of space in Bethel for a long time that they know. It's an old bank. It isn't really adequate for their needs, so this was a good opportunity to partner. Phase-two pool facilities, so it wouldn't be something we would construct immediately, but we'd wait for Echo Hollow Pool to live its useful life. And then at that point, a phase-two pool facility would be constructed. And then, you know, because we have quite a number of more people coming to this full-service community center, we would likely require, it would require somewhere between 200 and 360 additional parking spaces. We looked at several seating options, and we did this with the community by saying, hey, how do you use these spaces now? And people just gave us amazing information. It was really helpful. You know, so there are definitely areas people use a lot and they really value, and there were others that, you know, they weren't, it wasn't as big of a deal. So we had amazing just participation in our public process. It was a nine-month process. We held three public meetings. We had an open house at the end, 120 attendees over time. So those are night meetings where, you know, 30 or 40 people show up. Having said that, we had almost 700 responses to our community surveys, which was really remarkable. Brilliant. We could never have gotten 700 people in a room to talk about this project. And people really shared a lot of detail about how they felt this project would impact their immediate community. And then we also sent out, you know, three postcards, hey, meetings. And then we sent out a newsletter that really summarized all of the issues and a lot of the response that we had received and where we landed. So some of the key public concerns. One was, well, why can't you just build this on another site? You know, it's big, you know, I don't know. Well, right now, we have some sort of public safety and crime issues. And maybe I'll just sort of address these as we go along. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just confused. Build what on another site? The community center?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Why can't you build this somewhere else? There is other vacant land around here. You know, the answer to that question was really, this site is ideal for, meets a lot of the why's needs. So it's proximity to the school, you know, which also, you know, the why, it's a nonprofit. It has a lot of similar missions to our city recreation department, which is basically to, you know, it's youth development, it's healthy living, it's social responsibility. And, you know, because of that, we're looking for proximity to kids, families, and so that it would be used on a regular basis, especially like after-school childcare, those kinds of things. So the Bethel Park site, its proximity to Meadowview School is amazing. And it's in a densely residential neighborhood. Those really serve their needs. You know, them developing on another site would have involved, you know, purchasing the property, complete tear-down redevelopment, and they wouldn't have the proximity to some of their base users that really participate in a lot of their programs. So public safety and crime. So there's some sort of, you know, to a greater degree, Bethel Park is largely undeveloped, which, you know, basically is sort of a setup for people to just come and hang out and do things because no one's paying attention. So our answer to that question was, well, as you develop the park, as you bring more people to the park, those issues tend to, as, you know, we've experienced in parks over many years of experience, tend to abate when there are more people in the park and there's more programmed activity. What about additional traffic cutting through the neighborhood streets? This was a big one for us. We really looked carefully at the potential locations of the building and traffic patterns and how cars might use the residential streets, the classification of those streets, their traffic capacity, existing speeding problems, conflicts with pedestrians and bicycles. We looked at all those things very, very carefully in coming up with our plan. So we dealt with those comments very directly. Well, what about the scale of the building? If it's going to be, you know, two stories high, you know, next to residential homes, how do we deal with that? Very valid question. You know, how do we? If this comes to pass, we have to go through a conditional use permit. And so those compatibility issues are critical to making sure that it fits correctly within the neighborhood and doesn't adversely impact it from building scale to traffic to anything else. So and then again, the additional traffic and speeding on Legacy. Okay, well, the street definitely is built to capacity. How do we keep people safe? And then, well, there's no bus service in this area. Well, LTD, you know, reevaluates their bus service every year. So if a facility like this were to be constructed, they would be looking at use patterns and likely extend their service back out to Green Hill again. And then what about the amount of parking on the site? So we heard all kinds of feedback about parking. So, okay, there's too much parking in my neighborhood now because of the Babe Ruth facilities. Oh, gosh, you know, we really don't want you to pave the entire park with parking. So how do we strike this balance with, you know, what is code, what is actually needed for what we have now, and what reasonably meets, you know, the need of the new facilities without, you know, going too far in either direction? So that was a very, we just thought a lot and very carefully about that problem. At the end of the process, I think most people were actually very, very happy with the process. And we directly contacted some people who were a little bit more frustrated and talked to them about it. But overall, people were really happy. We did a sort of a post-project survey. How fair do you think it was? Do you feel like staff was responsive to your comments? Overwhelmingly, people were really happy with the results. They thought that we had really engaged their comments. They felt like we had answered their questions and that the solution that we had landed upon really met, you know, most of the needs. So this is our updated master plan, and it shows, you know, it shows a 65,000-square-foot facility here in different phases. We added parking here, here, and here. And, you know, with really parking for phase one was really here. Phase one being basically, you know, a main why without the pool and a branch library. Phase two would be the pool facilities. Phase three would be additional, I think athletic facilities and offices down the road or community rooms, et cetera. That hasn't really been scoped. It was a very sort of general scoping with some associated square footage that we'd done at a concept level with, you know, the architects had worked with the why, some architects, pivot architecture had worked with the why to sort of develop some of those basic frameworks. We also added, oops, let's go back over here. We also showed future spray play, which we were actually plumbed out for at that site as a community park amenity. People said, please keep the tennis courts, please keep, you know, the basketball and volleyball courts. So we kept those up here in just a little different configuration. And then added paved trails throughout this lower area and really kept this natural area that people really cared about and wanted. The only other piece that we really had to dedicate, space for, is this storm front facilities to kind of deal with the new paving and new impervious surfaces. So and then, you know, sort of in tandem with this, which we're not showing, but we did some initial sort of analysis of traffic calming and just changes to the intersections and stop signs and things like that that we could make, the school crossings, et cetera, just to address a lot of folks' concerns with bike and pedestrian traffic, both off-site and on-site. We thought really carefully about the on-site movements of all those uses as well. And the main reason we ended up with a facility on the west side was because Habitsure Way is a residential street, which is on the right, on the east side there. And our other choice was for a northeast corner location. And because of the building mass and because of the traffic impacts, which we didn't really feel like we could adequately address by putting the building there, we landed on the west side. And I think people are very happy with that choice. So do you want to wrap it up, Neil?
Yeah, so in terms of, you know, general steps along this path towards a project here, we now have a master plan that would accommodate this size of a community center. It doesn't have to be the why. The master plan just allows for a community center in the configuration. You stay there and you have the attachment as well in your packet. To go, the next step following that is to develop a lease arrangement for the why to be able to use that land for this facility. And then the following step after that is to go through the land use process, which is the conditional use permit process for that large, that size of a community center on this property. So those would be the stages before we could really get to a project.
Ready for questions?
Yes.
George Pulling is first and Benny, you're second.
First of all, thank you for the presentation and also the willingness to work with the why on this. You know, it's definitely an area of our community that needs additional services. It's probably one of the fastest-growing parts of our community, and with the influx of the population, the need is definitely there. One question is, who would pay to have this constructed? Not only the park facilities, but the building itself?
Yeah, so, you know, there would be a number of details that will be part of the lease discussion that we'll come back to you later. But the proposal the why has brought to us is they would pay to construct the building and to maintain the building.
Okay, that was my second question. I did have some concerns about the ongoing maintenance. Would that also cover some of the operation costs? And also, would that, if you're talking about in the future, you know, moving the branch library over there, would that be our, the city's responsibility or is that something that could be worked out in the lease agreement?
So the first part of the question, yeah, the operations and maintenance of the building would be the why's responsibility. That's the proposal that they put on the table. The details around the library probably need a little more discussion. The idea right now is that there would be a space for that. And beyond that, we haven't really got down to brass tacks in terms of the details of that.
Okay, well.
But that's coming.
That is a discussion that may or may not need to be taking place because the way our budget is going, we may end up losing both our branch libraries. We don't know. At this point, we don't know. So that's something that we need to keep an eye on. And then after the meeting last week that we had discussing the civic property, I was advised about kind of like a three-way property deal, that this conversation we're having with the why is contingent upon the why selling their current property in South Eugene, purchasing Civic Stadium property to redevelop that and then work with the city to develop this. I can't, I haven't got any confirmation on that. I just heard that. Is there any truth to that information that you're aware of?
We probably don't want to confirm something that may or may not, excuse me. I think that'd be best left up to the why to answer.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Benny?
So would the why pay for the lease, like rent for the land?
Well, that'd be one of the details that would come back to you in a lease discussion. I think we have a work session on November 12th in which you'll actually see a term sheet for the lease that we will have vetted with city staff and work through with the why. So you'll be looking at all the who pays for what questions in that discussion.
I have a question about the legality. I thought we were told that if we bought Civic Stadium, we couldn't lease it. Was that correct?
Right, that was the...
But this is a park we're talking about.
Right, the difference, my understanding, and Catherine, you can weigh in, is that if Civic Stadium were purchased with park bonds, that's different. This property, as I understand it, was not purchased by any park bonds, which then the same restriction wouldn't apply.
But it is a park.
It's a park, but the...
Bond money.
Yeah, it's the bond money is the restriction, not that it's a park.
Okay, then my other questions, we were talking about a full-service community center, and I understand the only one we have now is Peterson Barn, the only one that's operating. Westmoreland and Amazon are not operating as, they have some things going on, but they're not operating as full-service community centers anymore. And I've been told by people who live out there that Peterson Barn is operating all the time as a community center.
Sure, when you say full service, you mean the range of people it serves is, like seniors, preschool, youth, and that? Is that what you're referring to?
Like open to the community. Amazon, I know, I'm more familiar with Amazon, and I know that people are still unhappy that that's no longer what it used to be.
Things have evolved and changed over the years based on the demands. Amazon would be an example, where we've actually increased programming to 55 and older population. Three or four years ago, it wasn't. But now we're offering services that would include preschool, elementary, middle, high-end, senior adult populations. Peterson Barn has traditionally always been that, has a senior program and a youth program in the same building. That's kind of a classic example. Other community centers like Campbell is strictly seniors. And Sheldon Community Center is mostly youth, so...
But Amazon isn't really doing much right now.
Amazon is rolling along like it always has. It's doing full services.
That is what I hear from residents. There used to be classes there for people, all sorts of classes. But and Westmoreland isn't even a community center now, is it?
The Westmoreland is used by Boys and Girls Club.
No. So it isn't. So I'm surprised that we're talking about adding them when we are not using the ones we already had, in a sense. And also, you're talking about a spray play. There isn't one in Amazon Park.
That's correct.
Yeah. Or in Tugman Park, where people have wanted one.
That's right, that's correct.
Maybe they should come first since they're already parked.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess my main question was about the lease and about how we could do that. Thank you.
Hey, Greg.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation you guys have just gave. I think it was really concise, very good. I'd like to drill down a little bit into the issue of transportation because Alamo and Legacy are not really built as multipurpose streets. They're built as basically residential streets. And we know that there is development. I was there yesterday going on on the south side in terms of a new subdivision where houses are going up, you know, as we speak. How far down the line have you had discussions with LTD? Because when I was on the LTD board three years ago, we reduced service 20% system-wide. And one of the places that was hit the hardest are the outlying areas, specifically our area in Bethel. So we had to take a bullet on that one, you know, because we just, you know, didn't have the ability to extend that service. My hope is that the West Eugene MX will provide a basis for us getting more in-depth service into the neighborhood. Where are we at in terms of that? Because that's been a major concern that a number of residents have floated to me over the last few months.
I think I can answer that. I mean, which is that we had very, very preliminary discussions with them. I mean, I think, you know, we weren't sure when this would actually happen, if at all. You know, we were updating the master plan. We were able to tell people what LTD told us at the time, and they said, you know, I think we can, we could probably run the bus, you know. Right now, it stops at one of the state streets. I think it's Dakota. But they'd be willing to run the bus all the way out Barger, you know, have it go around the Green Hill, turn around there and come back. So you'd have a bus stop at least at Legacy and could walk down to the why. Beyond that, that was sort of the extent of what they could sort of commit to us, at least just from a staff-to-staff discussion. I think that, you know, as this project would progress, we'd probably have a lot more detailed discussions just based upon, you know, yeah, West Eugene MX coming out, so what does that mean for your whole system? And I think there's just a different reality that we're probably going to be talking about once this would come to pass. So I think we just definitely need to talk more to LTD about that. We've just had very preliminary discussions.
And then the other comment I would make is that our area has developed very rapidly without the amenities in terms of systems that other parts of the community have already developed. And because we've outstripped, our growth has outstripped that ability, we have a critical need. I mean, Peterson Barn is not adequate to service the entire Bethel community anymore. It needs to have a little bit more help. And also, we need the same thing with Echo Hollow Pool and other infrastructure needs that are not being served right now. If we wanted to reduce carbon footprint, we would build there. We have too many of our people that have to go out of Bethel to get services now. We have too many of our people that have to go out of Bethel to get services now that are readily available in other parts of the city, as well as Springfield.
The other thing I might add that relates to this is that the conditional use permit that will be required as a step in the process, of course, is focused on compatibility with the surrounding community, and traffic impacts are gonna probably be the centerpiece of that discussion, including what is the transit service? How much of the load can the transit service take compared to individual cars, compared to folks walking and biking?
George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd just first like to kind of flesh out and answer to Betty's earlier question, Councilor Taylor's earlier question about the bond funds, park bond funds and leasing. Park bond funds could indeed be used to purchase Civic Stadium property for 4J that cannot be used to lease properties from any other entity. They're strictly for parkland acquisition. It can't be used for any other purpose, and they can only be used to purchase property for park acquisition. However, the city could lease out the property if it were able to purchase it. It's kind of like we lease out Cuthbert Auditorium and the Fairmount Golf Course and Armin Laurelwood Golf Course. And so, yeah, it can be used to lease to another entity, but not to lease parkland from another entity. So, I just kind of had a couple of questions. I see all these new parking spaces, you know, that weren't in the original plan, in orange, and is it contemplated, I mean, I see some to the south of the proposed Y building, and I'm assuming that would be all for the YMCA, for their, strictly for their property. What about the others? Would those just be for general park users, including clients of the Y, or?
Correct, correct. So, you know, again, we're trying to strike a balance between, you know, not having enough, which is kind of the problem we have right now. By code, we have enough for the Babe Ruth Ballplex, but, you know, anecdotally, traffic's spilling out into the neighborhood every weekend. It's a pretty big deal. So, you know, kind of need to up capacity for that, and then, you know, and it's kind of, we thought about it as a sort of a phase approach as well. So, you know, the first part of the building before the pool came in, you would just need, you know, probably the new parking shown right around the building. As the pool comes online, you might need the stuff to the north and the additional parking a little bit to the west. And then, once you've built that third section, you'd need a little bit more. I think we also possibly, you know, need more once we built something, you know, once we build a spray play, it's a big draw. So, I think the question is, and we show more parking than is actually required by code, the question for us is actually, how do those parking spots get used? So, if you look at use patterns by the Y, so most of the, you know, most of the use at the current Y is sort of morning and evening and kind of, you know, a little bit on the weekend, but it's mostly weekday, weekday activity. And so, if you have a big tournament on the weekend, it's likely that, you know, those spots that are used by the Y during the weekdays could easily be used by ballfield participants at the same time. So, again, we're just really trying to strike that balance. I mean, it probably would be built, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't all be built at once. I think that's certainly, because it's expensive to do, I think you should, you need to sort of do it as you increase capacity appropriately. And that's kind of our...
And I'll just, to tag onto that, in general, a park master plan would allow, in other words, it provides for up to 400 and some spaces, but that doesn't mean, that is certainly what we're gonna do. Partly, there are the phases, but also, there's kind of keeping an eye on what is, what does the traffic end up being? And so, we've planned for what we think would be adequate, even if, you know, there's a little extra need beyond what the code would tell us is needed. But maybe we end up not needing that. But we've, we've sort of allowed us to adapt to seeing what the actual parking levels are.
Okay, so, maybe what I think you're saying is that you maybe wouldn't build all of these parking spaces? You would certainly, you know, build enough to take care of the Y's patrons, but you may not build all of the other ones?
Correct, it just allows for it.
Build, phase them in, maybe?
Right, we'd have to build what the code requires for the new building.
Right.
And beyond that, it's kind of a, you know, look at the phases, look at the use patterns, how much is spilling over into neighborhood streets, and, you know, also, what is our funding for building and maintaining parking lots?
Right. And then, I'm just wondering, would a traffic impact analysis be required?
Absolutely, it would definitely be required as part of the conditional use permit. And we've gone through sort of a pre-project meeting with planning and development staff, and they've identified several things, but that was definitely one of the parameters that would have to be addressed.
Okay. I think that's about all the questions I have for now. Evidently, we're gonna have another work session and actually talk about money.
Correct, well, yes.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a lot of questions, but I do appreciate the information, and it's exciting to see this potential development and this kind of public-private partnership with a nonprofit to enhance our capacity to provide services, basically to underserve part of our community. So, that's great. So, I have some questions that you might not have answers to right now, but will be important going forward. And that's kind of what would be, so if we're how, if we are able to keep the Bethel branch and we end up co-locating it there, kind of what is the use agreement in terms of general public access to the facility? Does the part that's, you know, managed by the Y only strictly exclusively for Y members? So, just kind of thinking about what kind of shared use agreement there is for the actual facility, and also for that parking area that would be added to accommodate the requirements in terms of permit?
Right.
I don't know if you have any answers now, or if that's the next phase of conversation?
Yeah, really, that's the next phase, that, you know, how does a public access library space compared to the rest of the facility? And do we have a separate entrance? And how is that shared? And the parking? All those things are gonna be addressed through the lease process. And so, again, what we'll be coming back to in November is what we call a term sheet, all the kind of stuff that matters, the real guts of the lease agreement in terms of money, and who builds what, and who maintains what, and where it is, and what part of the park is leased, and all those things. We'll come back.
Great, that was the main, those are the main things I'm interested in at this point. I mean, I think the plan looks good, and I'm excited to talk about it further.
We have about seven minutes, and I've got Alan, and then Greg wanted to make some more comments, and I think we'll wrap this up.
So, yeah, I have this similar question, 'cause if it's just the Y that's using, only Y members can use it, it's not really a community center. And so, that's fundamentally a very important point. If it's gonna be a community center, it needs to be open to more than just Y members. Otherwise, it kind of coerces everybody to become a Y member over in that part of town. You said you had lots of public involvement, and what do the people right across the street to the, to the, to the west think of having a, right now, it's more or less vacant, then it potentially was gonna be a 10,000 square foot. Now, it's a 65,000 square foot building right across the street with lots of use.
So, yeah, I can answer that question to a degree. So, you know, it's interesting, 'cause the houses along the street there actually back up to Legacy. So, it's not their front yards, it's actually their backyards, and it's fenced. So, I think, you know, their greater concerns have actually been around, you know, traffic safety and overflow parking. Those have been their issues. I think sort of the scale of the building and, you know, it will be somewhat set back from, you know, they're not as concerned about that. Those weren't the concerns that we heard. We really heard more about, about traffic and parking.
Yeah, traffic would be a big issue.
It's a big issue.
But, so, this goes through a conditional use permit?
Yes, it goes through a CUP, yes. We're actually, we had a CUP before for the old one, and I think we're actually gonna go through a new process for this, to really...
That would take a year and a half, year, year and a half?
I think nine months is typical, but, you know, depending on how complex it is.
And what would be involved in the CUP discussion for the new, for the traffic, obviously?
Right, yeah, the traffic analysis is...
And everything that has to do with compatibility.
I used to be able to quote the criteria for the CUP, but I've now been away from it long enough that I can't remember, but, you know, exactly. But, yeah, it really, it just focuses on, I think there might be four or five criteria that relate to compatibility with the surrounding uses. And so, the impact of the bulk of the structure, the traffic, the parking, that, you know, the changes in views, all those...
And it requires a lot of detail. There's an extensive amount of design detail that, you know, needs to be prepared for conditional use permit. So, it's, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
And basically, with the park planning process that Emily led, what we were trying to do is we were trying to vet everything that we thought might come up under a CUP in our park planning process, so that when we got to a finished plan, we felt pretty good that that would make it through the CUP process without major changes. So, we spent a lot of time talking about all those compatibility issues. And, you know, you're mentioning, you know, the properties that are on Legacy. Another, one of the reasons it ended up on the west side was because the houses on the east side face that part of the park. And if you put that big building there, they'd have this huge thing looming over, whereas on the west side, they're faced the other way. So, we took all those things into account.
Yeah, and having gone through a CUP process for the arena, U of O basketball arena, it is very extensive and does take into consideration the concerns of the neighborhood. And you have to mitigate for them, too. So, that's a process that the neighborhood should look forward to participating in. The last question I had relates to how much would ballpark estimates of cost for a 10,000 square foot community center, 65,000 with a pool?
Sorry, I'm laughing, I actually don't know. I think it would really, it really, it completely depends upon what, you know, what's included. And I, you know, and we don't, you know, we, those kinds of sort of cost questions weren't really, you know, something we were necessarily grappling with. We were looking, we were really looking at, you know, a full-service community center and how that's compatible within the park setting. So, it wasn't really something we looked at in specific.
Well, a hundred dollars a square foot would be six thousand million dollars, a hundred and fifty, it'd be like 10 million, which is a lot of money to come up with. Okay, thanks.
So, just a couple of things that I wanted to add to the conversation is that, just as I think you're trying to be, get out in front of the CUP questions, I also want to be sure that we stay focused on what goals we're trying to achieve with this that fit into our overall goals, so that we take advantage of the opportunity to move things along that we want. For example, I think the transportation thing is really important, and multimodal is actually really important, and all of those things are taken into consideration. So, I'd like to really be as specific as we can about putting out what goals we have in front of us, and then seeing how this can be used to reach those goals, as opposed to, oh, yeah, and that will accomplish these goals. So, there's sort of different approaches. I'd like us to be intentional about this and thinking about the things that we're trying to have happen. And for Bethel, I think this is a really big opportunity to sort of change the conversation, and you've been doing a really good job with that. So, I think it's really important that we continue to talk about what we want to have happen in the long run, and that this is a piece of what we want to have happen in the long run for that part of the community. And only two quick things is that I would hope that this would actually reduce our library cost. And we'd wanna see how that would, how that would help us be able to not lose a branch library, but actually be able to keep a branch library in that area. I think it's very, very important. And I'd also say that I think that all of our community centers have different purposes and provide different things in different ways. For example, I would say that Amazon has a pool or a few things like that around there that others don't have, so, you know, spread it around. So, with that, Greg, you wanna wrap this up, and then we'll go on, we'll move on to our next topic.
Thanks, Mayor. I had two quick questions. One, off this map to the immediate northeast is a development by the Bethel School District that includes a turf field. You know, jazz lights is being used currently. I know because, you know, my family uses that. What, can you tell me how the parking plan has developed for that? Because it appears that we don't have adequate parking, actually, I could tell you, we don't have adequate parking over there. And, you know, we've got folks that have decided to carve out their own parking space on the open field directly next to the, to the facility. So, we've got things happening, undeveloped part right adjacent to the field, where we have practices going on for Pop Warner and all the rest of that, as well as a high usage between, you know, one use coming at one point in time and the next right after it. So, what was the parking idea around that? Because the parking is fairly, the bulk of the parking is back over by Bethel Park, the baseball fields, and there's this kind of large space between crossing over kind of the wetlands and then getting to, to that facility.
Well, I think it was wholly developed on Bethel School District property, so I actually don't have an answer to that question.
Didn't they have to go through some parking?
They might have, but I, but we weren't involved in it.
Okay.
So, you would have to ask the school district.
And the second thing is, what are our land use restrictions around the wetlands that are directly around there? And is there sufficient mitigation plans for when or if a Y is built, there is some kind of recreational facility?
Yeah, so, there is a small area that's technically wetland that would be affected by the very south end of this community center site. It was of low enough quality and status that it didn't even make it into our Goal V protections that, you know, we did all those years ago. But it's still subject to state and federal regulations, so you do need to mitigate. And, you know, some of the discussion we've had is to, to actually improve that little channel that goes diagonally through the south end of the site as a mitigation for the small impact where the community center would be. And from initial discussion, it looked like that would be possible.
So, thank you all very much for our first trip into the park concept.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Keep on hearing as you move forward.
Thank you.
Next up is the Sustainability Commission Work Plan and Annual Report.
I'll turn over to Babe and whoever else she's going to ask to participate.
Thank you, I'm Babe O'Sullivan, Sustainability Liaison in the City Manager's Office. Our goals tonight for being with you are, first of all, to present an annual report on the commission's activities from fiscal year 13, and secondly, to gain your approval of the work plan that's being proposed for fiscal year 14. Just quickly, I wanted to introduce, I'm joined here by the Chair and Vice Chair of the commission, so we have Kathy Jaworski, who's serving as Chair, and Steve Newcomb, who's our Vice Chair. Before I turn over the microphone to them, I just wanted to give you a quick review about the commission, just to remind you that it was established in 2007. It's a 13-member body, with each commissioner serving a four-year term. Their primary function is to provide advice to you and to the city manager about sustainability efforts in the community. They're supported by staff from the Sustainability Program, so that's myself and Matt McCray. And we have a full complement of commissioners and a robust work plan to share with you tonight. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Steve Newcomb to talk about the activities from fiscal year 14.
Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, councilors. I'm gonna review a little bit of what we've accomplished in the past year and try to set it in context of what the council has been working with, what the city's been looking You know, overall, the big piece that I think the Sustainability Commission has held is to look at things in perspective and balance of not only economics, which are very important, but social and environmental issues as well. I think over time, we've done a pretty good job of at least providing a perspective on the balance of those issues. The other thing that we've done a good job of is to stay engaged with land use and transportation issues in the community. issues in the community, initiatives in the community, and provide recommendations that help us achieve balance between car transportation and more active means of transportation in the community. So in a sense, we're leveraging projects that are on the way to make sure that they count for sidewalks and bike paths. And the last thing is to keep the perspective of climate change in the discussion as, as it's something that's not likely to go away over time. And if we balance these things successfully, we will be more resilient in the future for change. So let's talk about some specifics. What things did we actually get done in the last year? On transportation projects, we provided testimony to the Lane Area Commission on Transportation and the Metropolitan Policy, Metropolitan Policy Council for priorities for funding under the statewide transportation improvement program. And what the result of that is, is that all of the active transportation projects that we endorsed, recommended, got approved for funding. So that means we're leveraging other people's money to build bike paths, sidewalks, kind of the complete streets concepts, which I consider a big win for the community. We've also provided a carbon fee memo to the council and got council support, your support for Senate Bill 306, which I think has, will have a very good outcome in, it was signed, it was approved and signed by the governor. And in a, in a month or so, we're going to have some data on how that tax can look as a revenue-neutral way to encourage adaptation, climate adaptation work, and, and as well as mitigation, climate mitigation work. So I think that, that's a big win for the, for the community and for the state. And it put Eugene on, on the, on the edge of that recommendation. We've also gone back to our roots in the past year and looked very carefully at sustainable business practices and worked with local businesses to see what is being done and what policies or rules may stand in the way of embodying more sustainable practices in the business community. The business community in Eugene is, has shown consistent and strong interest in being sustainable. And there's certain ways that we as, we can support them and there's policies that sometimes make it difficult on them. So we're currently vetting the findings with city staff and will be coming forward with some, some recommendations on that. The other thing we've looked at carefully is we reviewed the internal climate action plan. We've requested the session with, with you folks to go over the findings and that's been rescheduled for a little bit later. The importance of that, in my mind, is there's a very real economic cost-saving potential in following through on the goals that were set in the internal climate action plan. So the staff for the Sustainability Commission has helped us keep our eye on that ball and look at the specific comparison of where we are today with where we thought we would The year has not been a year of total accomplishment. I don't think anybody could, could step into that place. So what are some areas where we've struggled or had shortfalls? I actually think with the triple bottom line evaluations, they're rather inconsistently applied at the city level to decision-making process. That's a place where I think we can support and provide that balance of at least looking at the whole picture. Also, the food policy recommendations from 2012, I think we've had a hard time pushing those forward. I think they're starting to come to fruition now. So there's some things happening here and I think that's a good sign. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to talk about the future at this point.
And just to finish on the food, I do think, you're probably aware of this, too, there's just a lot of forces coming together around the food economy and the health issues associated with food. And there's a real nexus of sustainability issues associated with that. And so we've, we're happy to know that there's a work session on this coming up later this week. So thank you for, for scheduling that. So I'm going to talk about our work plan. I won't read it through. The font is small as usual. I'll try to give you the context first. So I have been on the commission for almost four years. And in terms of the last year, Steve gave you an overview of some of the things we've worked on. And I think one of the, the biggest changes that, we actually worked on quite a few things of significant substance, where there was a lot of work outside of commission meetings to come up with our recommendations and proposals and, and review. And so we really were successful in getting our committees up and running, which, as you know, committees are, and subcommittees of subcommittees can, can consume you. But I think our process of, of activating committees has resulted in our bringing forward a volume of recommendations to you this year, some of which you were able to get to and some of which you're getting to now. So we know there's a lot on your plate, but we're pretty productive with the committees that we have. And I want to thank you for the new appointees. Both the appointees last year and this year have hit the ground running, great new energy on the commission. Not to take away from our senior member, Sean Bowles, who's here as well, but we have a mix of, we have a mix of senior and new. And it's a really, really dynamic group. So thanks for the wonderful appointments. So this coming year, I think what we want to get around is, is the frustration we had last year where much of our work was putting forth recommendations and waiting for them to be gotten to or waiting for the timeline of something we wanted to, to review to happen. A lot seemed out of our control. And so we've really tried to structure our work plan around things that we know that we're already working on and leave flexibility for emerging issues to come in and be able to be a little bit more proactive in our activities on behalf of the city for you. So our work plan is a product of a retreat that we, a two-part retreat that we held. We did a two-part?
It was just one.
We did a one, oh, it was a one-long one this year. But it was good. And I want to review with you kind of the, the main focus and how we picked that at the retreat, the methods that we're going to use to carry out the work plan, and then the specific strategies which are in the work plan document itself. So first of all, the bulk, in terms of focus, the bulk of our work plan reflects ongoing city initiatives, goals, and investments, and leveraging current opportunities. And in particular, we really are aligning a lot of our work with your priorities around Envision Eugene and looking for the specific ways that the expertise and networks of the commission and the staff can help that, that sustainability really be embedded in, in Vision Eugene as it gets implemented. And we have begun a series of conversations with the planning staff so that we can, we had them at our last meeting and will continue to have regular updates so we can really be looking for where those leverage points are and what kinds of, of things are happening on the ground that suggest a need for attention. So we're excited to be doing that. Secondly, as you know, and we know, the Sustainability Commission is, is, and the sustainability staff are on the shortlist of potential budget cuts. And we know the, the budget dilemma that you're struggling with. We are very committed to informing the budget process as it progresses and, as you might imagine, to be giving you very solid reasons for why maintaining the sustainability programs of the city, whether or not it's the commission in its current form, are really make great economic sense as well as reflect the priorities of the city's residents. So we will be bringing you more on that. But that's kind of the elephant in the room. We created our work plan for the whole year with the expectation that this is a city's, the city's commitment to sustainability remains regardless of the budget. And we're going to do our best to keep the investment in place as well. That's just a little like over the bow, I guess, to, to let you know. Third, we are tracking with, with strong support from the staff in terms of all of their research, which I think is a very important role that the staff does. They're tracking how the city is meeting its internal climate action goals, which are related to city goals around greenhouse gas reduction and, and carbon reduction. And so we're reviewing those reports pretty carefully and looking at what do they mean for the city? How are we doing? And helping to communicate what that information means to, to you and also to the community as a whole. Because this is something we're all in together. We have lots of good information coming in and lots of implications for that data that's coming in. So we don't want it to sit in a report. We're working with it. We're looking at it. We want to be a good source of input for you as you get that same information. Fourth, we really, we recognize that at the staff level, there are many, many partnerships between the sustainability programs and other organizations such as Bring Recycling, such as the neighborhood associations, E-Web, Parks, a variety of different organizations. And we want to do the same thing at the commission level, is build strategic partnerships in support of the city's goals around sustainability. We've had a list of liaisons that maybe is like 50, 50 people big. And that's clearly not very strategic. So we really are going to focus building deeper relationships that really help move the sustainability agenda of the city forward and model that on what we think is done very well at the staff level. Let's see. And five, our work plan does have a little wiggle room to address emerging issues as, as they arise. We felt like we had at some times too many things on our plate that is par for our culture, I guess, right now. But we really have strived to keep flexibility in the work plan. So that is, that is the focus areas. In terms of our roles, we saw our roles as asking questions, communicating value, proposing new things, and helping to problem solve. And the way in which we do this is through participating in ongoing processes and projects through the committees that we sit on, representing the Sustainability Commission or representing ourselves as citizens, but also wearing a sustainability hat, monitoring and tracking progress on goals and initiatives, and investigating new ideas and opportunities. So that is sort of our focus and methods. And the work plan reflects this, I hope, as, as you review it. So you can see that we're, we're on the work plan around Envision Eugene. We really think that, you know, when the pillars were set out, they're, they're lofty goals. And now that the rubber's hitting the road, some of them may not be, may be intention with, intention with each other or may play out a little differently than we thought. So we really are wanting to engage in the places where the implementation really has a, a challenge in trying to balance all the many things the city's trying to accomplish and bring the sustainability lens. So for example, we are, we are personally engaged and actively monitoring what's happening with the 20-minute neighborhood pilot projects because that is one of the sort of places where many of the pillars come together. And there are, there are many other examples of that. We have been working with the Planning Commission on a joint land use and transportation advisory committee, and we want to continue that. We don't know quite what form, what agenda, but that conversation is ongoing. Steve mentioned the sustainable business practices. We are finalizing a report for work that was begun last year in terms of what the business community sees as the ways in which the city helps their businesses to choose a more sustainable path and the ways in which the city might make it difficult. And the short version of our findings so far is there's many ways the city is very helpful. So we are going to come back with a more formal report to you very soon. In terms of transportation planning, we have members of the commission involved in various places on various parts of the transportation planning projects that the city is involved in. And they bring back that information to us as a full commission and we look at where are the places where we can make recommendations that will, again, advance the city's sustainability goals. So there's actually a lot of work in us, in a, in just one heading there because there's a lot of things going on around transportation. In terms of the triple bottom line, we, we definitely would like to see there be a more systematic way of applying the triple bottom line analysis to city projects, kind of a, a system, I guess, for it. And how that happens, we'll be working on. And we'll be coming to you with recommendations around that, too. We have a tool. We've used it some. We don't use it all the time. Some people like the tool, some people don't. But the idea of being systematic about looking at the sustainability principles, particularly on the major investments the city makes and major policies is very important. And we'll continue to be looking at that. Carbon fee. We brought you several iterations of our thinking on this, this policy matter last year, which resulted in, and we thank you for this, the, the city signing on to the state study bill. And the results of the statewide study around carbon fees will be coming up at the end of this year. So we'll be looking at what that report says and what its implications are for the community. Our perspective has always been that we don't think it's necessarily a city-scale issue at all to address, but that this city can provide a leadership role in addressing it at the scale where it needs to be addressed. So we will be bringing you more information on that as well. So I guess we still will be bringing a lot of recommendations this year, but they will, they will happen, we already know there's momentum and there's places where we can specifically see where there will be time when we can bring in things. And finally, two more things. Local food policy. We are thrilled that there's a work session later this week. As I mentioned at the beginning, we do think that this is an issue with a lot of traction, with a lot of different constituencies and a lot of opportunity. These are some really good things for the city. So we'll look forward to that conversation. And finally, in terms of adding things to our work program, I mentioned at the beginning that we want to be more, we want to retain the flexibility to be able to respond to things as they emerge. We did put in place this past year a formal, a formal process for adding things to our work plan because we had groups coming to us almost every month saying, add this, add that, which I guess is a sign that people care, right? That's a good thing. But, but we now have a process where we actually vet it first at the leadership of the commission before it gets onto the agenda. So that's our work plan. I think it's fairly ambitious, but I think that there are more points of contact with your agenda. I mean, that's been our goal in structuring it, that it isn't this thing off to the side that you hear from us once a year on what we're doing, but that you really see how what we're doing helps you advance all the goals that you have, and in particular, the sustainability goals that the city has, has put in place. And with that, I'd be happy to stop and answer any questions.
Kathy, thank you both very much for bringing that. I appreciate the work of the Sustainability Commission. It seems to be very thoughtful and, and focused. And I do think you're weighing in on the state transportation goals was an important piece of work and I appreciate that. And it really aligned well with what the state is trying to do. So like I said, it was fortuitous and we, I do want to say that we still have one more step to go. And that is it actually have to sign off by the Oregon Transportation Commission. We were told that all the positive signs to get it to that level are, are pretty good assurance that it'll get through, but it's not done till it's finally done. So with that, I've got, Alan serves on the commission. Alan, you're first, and then Claire.
Sure. Thanks. Great presentation, you guys. First of all, I'd like to compliment Babe and point out what a great job she's doing in
Oh, yes.
...helping the Sustainability Commission do what it does, along with implementing the sustainability program in the city. Babe's time with commission is only about 10% of her, 90% of her time is actually doing, managing the sustainability program within the city. And her and Matt McCray leveraged a great deal of actions and a great deal of financial benefits that actually accrued to the city through the implementation of those four goals that we passed last, a couple of years ago, especially around the energy savings and the things that, that are smart things to do and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that help the bottom line of the city are, I think, a direct result of having staff that funkes in on that stuff. And, and so she also sends out her report periodically that you get through your email. So that's a good way to keep track of what's, what's going, what she's doing and what Matt's doing. I think the commission does a really good, it's a really good, hard-working commission. I mean, they even gave up a Saturday in August to do the retreat. So, and so did, the new members are a great add, the new appointees that people had, especially since we were losing some really longtime members that go back to the Sustainable Business Initiative, like Rusty Rexius and Dave Funk have been there forever. Initiative, like Rusty Rexius and Dave Funk have been there forever. And, but the new people are stepped in and hit the ground running, as Kathy says, it really, there's some quality people on the commission. And I'd like to compliment the work that Kathy and Steve have done as, as the leadership of the commission and keeping us on track and keeping us to three hours, which is easy not to do in this case. The focus of the work plan is really on several things, the triple bottom line in particular, but also sustainable business practices for local businesses and making sure that they work to improve their businesses and improve their triple bottom line, but also improve their bottom line, creating cost-effective climate action within the city that Matt does a lot of. The transportation stuff is all filtered throughout here in promoting active and alternative modes, and of course, the local food policy stuff, that's going to be coming to us next week. Greg's been involved in quite a bit, is also something that's been on the plate. So there's a lot of follow-through on past actions that the Sustainability Commission has had and making sure that they keep moving forward, as well as focusing on the relevant issues of the day. So I think it's a really good work plan and maybe too ambitious, but it's a good, good place to be, I think, better than the alternative.
Claire, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you for this great work and great report. As you know, probably I served on the mayor's task force that made the recommendation to set up the Sustainability Commission. So I'm really excited to see how much you've delved into the work and how much planning and thought is going into the work that you're doing. And I think it is a real good sign, a very good sign, that folks are coming to the commission with suggestions, ideas, ways they think this commission can add value to the community. So I think that's really exciting. Some particular things that you highlighted in your work plan that I'm, I'm very pleased to see is wanting to continue to give input and monitor as we go into the implementation of Envision Eugene. I think there's going to be many, many challenges there for folks to, you know, the trade-offs that we're going to be making, and I think having the ability to articulate how those add to the sustainability of our entire city is going to be very, very important in helping people as they deal with those. Around budget input, I'm also glad that you guys are aware of where your line item is in the budget and what you can do to add value to our conversation, even around things that aren't directly around your own budget, but other budget considerations that we might be looking at and helping us to maybe frame some of those in terms of the triple bottom line and pieces that we might miss there. I'm also excited to hear about you continuing to leverage current partnerships, and I'm encourage you to keep seeking out places, whether those are with other non-city folks or other agencies, or even within the city. So my own organization, Elche, we've been working, you know, with the City of Eugene Recreation Center. We're kind of moving into this next phase where we're trying to encourage drinking water and talking to them about retrofitting, drinking fountains so people can fill water bottles there, and they're kind of struggling to identify how they might implement that, where they might get funding, and I can see some connections with the commission to support other city work that relates to your mission. I look forward to hearing about the businesses' experience in having support from the city in being, working on their own sustainability. I think that's really great that we are thinking about that, but I think that's a fundamental piece of this commission's work. So I look forward to that report. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned, Kathy, that the members of the commission serve on other bodies. Can you name what those, where those connections are?
How can I name them all? Sean, which do you serve on?
I also serve on the technical resources for the community.
Okay.
Howie Burnett.
And
Bebeck.
Bicycle
Pedestrian Action.
So Sue Walling, Sue Walling's on that, and Howie Burnett as well.
Okay, great.
Howie's on the road.
Howie's on the TSP one?
Yeah.
No, the road bond.
The road bond one.
Okay. And then you guys might have done, been doing this, or this might come through in other ways for the council, but you mentioned wanting to have this TBL tool used a little bit more, and maybe there's a way you could model that for us as we are going into a policy discussion about something that seems relevant, that you might maybe show us how that works and how we can do that? Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mike Lindberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just want to say thank you very much for the report, and thank you very much for all the hard volunteer work. I think that in this, there is a great deal that helps the city and helps businesses in the community, helps people in the community innovate and do things more intelligently, and I appreciate the hard work. I think when we get to the motion to approve, I may offer an amendment to accept rather than approve. There are a couple of pieces that give me at least a moment of concern that I would probably want to have further discussion on. I don't know if there's support for such an amendment, but issues around the support for a carbon tax give me pause, and issues around the mechanism by which there's input towards our transportation funding priorities give me a little pause that I'd like to have further conversation around. So that's probably what I'll do when it comes around.
Greg.
I want to echo the sentiments already made around the table. I think you guys have done an excellent job. Babe does a fantastic job, and if we can kind of recraft the limbo, ditto's to be, Zalink a ditto's on this one.
Please don't.
But, yeah, it, just singing in the same chorus here. But I've got some, I've got a couple of questions related to teasing out the environmental justice issues, particularly between my ward and Councilor Pryor's ward, where we have significant residential development sandwiched between industrial development and also a very large rail yard, where a number of my residents are very concerned about the effect of emissions on their health, on their children, on the community. And, you know, most specifically, you know, this is where, you know, this lands on people who are underserved and disadvantaged, and we have significant swaths of our community out there that are lower-income, underserved, and to some degree disadvantaged and not able to actively address those issues. So can you talk a little bit more about the planning around that?
Yes. Well, as you know, Joanne Gross from your neighborhood is a fantastic advocate for those issues, and Lisa Arkin, a former Sustainability Commissioner, has, has brought us, just recently gave us a refined sort of request for a work plan item specifically around that. She had brought us something last year that didn't quite fit the plan, so we're going to have that come through our vetting process. But I think the, the main way that we've seen to be working on this is through the Envision Eugene implementation, is to look at the specific things that are coming through and what the issues are, and make sure that the equity piece is very strongly emphasized as much as anything else. I think having Joanne on the commission is going to be very helpful in terms of making sure that that, that is not dropped, but I also think there's a number of commissioners who see this as an important issue. I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think it's just awareness of both the impacts and potential ways to mitigate for the impacts. That's one thing the commission's been good about, is coming up with different ways to look at mitigating for impact. So I hear the concern, and I think in the ongoing Envision Eugene process, paying attention to the kind of things we would ask folks to do to mitigate for known impacts to neighborhoods is, is a good way to start.
All right. And now I have George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for the presentation. I will be approving the work plan personally. I'd like to echo, I mean, I heard, I thought I heard a little bit of a concern about the triple bottom, the way the triple bottom line's been used, and I, if I interpreted what I heard correctly, I, I've been very skeptical of that so-called tool ever since it was introduced. I, so far, I don't see that it's, that it's been effective in helping us reach decisions. We've made some really important decisions, and there was no triple bottom line analysis submitted at all. It just seems to me like it's used when it's convenient and easy on the easy things, but when we have to make a tough decision, it's either not presented at all or superficial analysis that's being thrown together at the last minute. I just don't find it very useful, the way it's, and it's in frequency, and I think some of them have been very superficial, too. I don't know, it seems like you either have to really improve that or maybe just kind of do away with it, because I'm not impressed currently with the way that we've been using it. I think the bottom line's still the main thing in a lot of, most decisions. That's a comment. Now, I might have a quick, do you have a couple of questions? Let's see. On page, oh yeah, on page 15, that's the FY13 report, I'm looking under 20-minute neighborhoods, and it says, "Track progress of the pilot 20-minute neighborhoods. Identify and flag opportunities for policy recommendations based on pilot programs." Where are the pilot neighborhoods? Can you?
One is South Willamette. So there's a, besides the transportation planning that's happening, there's a, what's the name of the plan that's being done there? Concept?
The concept. Plan the 20-year, like, look like 20 years from now.
And then up in Northeast Neighbors, which is actually in my neighborhood, there's a SNAP process, which is sort of a earlier-stage use of the 20-minute neighborhood frame to, to set some initial priorities for the neighborhood.
I see. Okay. And then it says, just kind of slide across the page horizontally under Planned Activities, it says, "Meet with city staff and neighborhood leaders to discuss the progress of the 20-minute neighborhood projects." Have you, in fact, been meeting with the neighbors about South Willamette and, I mean, the neighborhood leaders?
Well, our, I'm trying to make sure I get this right, but we have several members who are connected with that neighborhood, either as residents or as businesses, or business relationships, and they've attended a number of the different meetings in the neighborhood around specifically the transportation improvements. And then in the Northeast Neighbors, I'm actually meeting with our neighborhood group. It was supposed to be this week, but I understand it's been pushed off a bit around their findings from the SNAP process. And I, on a personal note, my husband is chair of the Neighborhood Association, so I get regular briefings on what's going on.
Yeah.
But yes, so, so it is something, sorry? Whether I like it or not, yeah. So, you know, both of those, those are, the timelines for both of those have been a little hard to predict, but we've been doing our best to stay informed and look for the places where, okay, the sustainability lens is now going to be a helpful thing to, to compare the experience on the ground with what we're, what the city goals are, and so that's progressing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just a couple of comments. Alan, you want to get in queue? And, and then I'm going to ask George to put the motion out. I just want to suggest that maybe during the budget process, it's making the case for the benefit we get from the Sustainability Commission and the sustainability work, I think will be important, but it's also to probably beneficial to invite the budget committee to ask questions and to learn about the, the commission as opposed to selling it, if I'm saying that's the correct way, because I think when they learn what you've been doing, it will sell itself. So I'm just drafting that.
Thank you.
And then, just reminding everybody that the council itself voted to support the legislation for the carbon tax. And I am not at all opposed to trying to improve the triple bottom line analysis, but I want to remind everyone that that is a tool to just present a series of questions that staff will ask as they try to make, bring things forward, so that they themselves, as they're working on things, will bring forth the issues around equity and the economy and the environment to help them with their thinking about it. It's not a tool that is supposed to be used to precisely gauge the merit or not of a particular project. And so I think a lot of this is for people to really understand how it's been used and what its purpose was, which is very different than a tally or something of that sort. If we can tighten it in some way or make it more evenly used, I think that's a great thing, and if there are improvements that people have to it, but I do think that we call them back to the, the purpose was to help us really bring thinking about the triple bottom line into the process of looking at, at policy decisions and major decisions that the city is making, and it's not to guide you to a specific conclusion, but to have you take all of those things into consideration as you try to bring forth the best policy suggestion to council as possible. Yep.
Oh, well, just a, just a word of clarification about a content piece in our work plan, and that is, we don't have the word "carbon tax" anywhere in it. It's carbon, revenue-neutral carbon fee. Okay? Just want to make sure.
I'm in marketing, too, yeah.
No, no, it's, there's a difference. There's a difference. I mean, and so we, we specifically use that language to communicate our intent.
Thank you, Bill. Alan?
Yeah, I was going to mention that it's a revenue-neutral carbon fee. That means it takes other monies and replaces them with that, so you get the right incentives to deal with, with carbon issues. But as, as to the TBL tool, I and many commissioners actually have concerns about how it gets used, but its purpose, as like the mayor said, is to really ensure that the three areas in the triple bottom line all get thought about and analyzed when you're making the decision. And, and that, to me, is the real import of it, not that it directs you towards a different or particular way of thinking about it, but that you do think about the environment, the economics, and social equity issues. And, and I guess the city manager indicated that we will be seeing the TBL analysis and some AISs coming up. I don't know if you wanted to mention anything about that, Sean?
We are working on that. We're just trying to find a good issue to bring that up, so it has, it's a good example of how it can be used, so.
And as far as the approve/accept is concerned, I think we approve work plans. They're not reports. We don't have to agree everything. We, we're telling the commission, this is what we want you to do. We ask all of our commissions to bring us work plans that we then approve, so that we can have input and direction on what they're working on. So I think it's been our practice that we approve work plans regardless. If you don't want to approve it, you try to change it until we get to a point where it's, where it's, where you can support it. What we did last time was we asked for some changes in it, so, and, and those were accommodated. So that's what I think we should do again, as we do, as common practice with all of our, our commissions, is approve their work plans.
Betty?
Thank you. Would pesticides and herbicides come within the scope of your work, do you think?
They, they could. Yeah, it's not, it's not a key focus.
I'm not sure it's directly related, but I noticed that, I was in Hendrix Park today, and I noticed they're using herbicides.
Yeah.
Which I think is unfortunate and not environmentally good. And I wonder, some things I wonder if you are working on, or you might, such as sidewalks when you talk about 20-minute neighborhoods.
Yes.
And expansion of the UGB, where we talk about food security, and an idea if, have you thought about asking employers to provide bus passes to employees? I think that would be a big incentive for people to use alternative transportation. Bicycle parking, secure bicycle parking is really important, but bus passes could be very helpful, too.
All of the things you mentioned are in the realm of things that relate to sustainability. The sidewalks are connected with our current work plan through the transportation improvements. The, the UGB, as you know, we did weigh in on certain aspects of that when it was, when the original boundaries were being set, and we will continue as part of looking at Envision Eugene to, to weigh in on that. One of the things we've talked about most is sort of why the mix of housing driving the need for the expansion of the boundary, but will look to be useful in
the need for the expansion of the boundary, but we'll look to be useful in our input on that, and we are aware of the PRIMAG land that's connected with part of, some of the constraints. The other ones are not currently in our work plan, doesn't mean they couldn't be, but right now, they're not in our work plan.
Well, so you take them as suggestions?
Yeah, I've got the notes. Thank you.
Mike, and then George is going to put the, the motion out.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd probably still offer the amendment I mentioned despite Alan's suggestion about what regular council policy is. I appreciate that idea. I wonder, there's an issue tangential to what Betty mentioned that's very interesting to me, and I've thought about bringing up as a work session. Excuse me, but I wonder if it isn't more appropriately something for the Sustainability Commission to investigate? And it's the issues around bees in our community and colony collapse and the effect of neonicotinoids, which is of great concern to me, and have considered the idea of a, as I said, of a work session on. I don't, I don't know if that's a part of, or could be a part of, any part of your work plan, but it's something that I have great concern about, so I thought I'd bring it up.
You might want to talk about that on Wednesday, because it's definitely related to a food initiative, and so.
Mm-hmm. I had a, I've reached out to Lisa Arkin on that. We haven't connected to talk about it yet, but that's an issue that is-
I have a Mason bee house in my garden for that reason.
I think I, I can safely say I probably spend more time growing things than most folks at the table here, and that's a big concern to me.
Yeah.
George, put the motion on the table.
I move to approve the Sustainability Commission FY14 work plan.
Second.
Moved in second. If you want to make a comment before-
I was just going to offer that. I believe we're, the council approved a work session on integrated pest management and banning neo, the neonicotinoids. I commend you on pronouncing that so well.
Neonicotinoid.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is a part of that proposal. So, it will be something that the council is going to have a chance to consider.
Any other thing related to this motion?
Move to accept rather than approve. With a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
Dies for lack of a. Okay? Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition, one, it passes. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.